I like to cry.
I'm glad it happens to others.
You ready?
Yeah.
Well, I'm ready. Call this meeting to order. The February meeting of the Porter County Election Board will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, republic where we stand, for one nation, for God, and for liberty, liberty of the people, and of our own.
We're having technical difficulties here for a second. Nobody should have to live through hearing my voice say anything twice. Told ya. All right, roll call.
President Roush?
Yep.
Member Sinister?
Chair.
Procy Biggs?
Oh, I'm sorry, here.
Procy Williams?
Yep.
And Secretary Bailey here.
Clerk's report.
Um, we are beginning to go through all the items needed for the grants and starting to send in the intro letters, get everything ready for the schools, for the sticker contest. So those will be hitting the school mailboxes shortly. We are working on partnering with the Treasurer's Office again for the tax bill, putting information in the tax bill again for early vote and absentee applications and things like that again. On March 6th, the Elections Director and Assistant Director will join me for the Northern District Conference going over elections information. And then Sunday and I went over a risk-limiting audit webinar recently, and we are toying with the idea of inviting V-Stop back to Porter County to do a risk-limiting audit in December, or I'm sorry, in November following the general election. More to come on that. But that's all I have for my report.
Thank you. Directors?
Pretty sure this covered everything, Mark.
Okay. All right. Everyone should have received a copy of last month's minutes electronically. I'll move acceptance of the previous minutes. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Campaign finance reports. Delinquent reports, is that what we're gonna do first here?
We do the delinquents first.
Okay, which are they?
All the ones that are due on January the 17th. Those are all the ones due, they're the annual reports.
So we just go down the list here? Should I read everything in?
You can start looking. And we can actually start looking at the waivers too.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna read a statement into the record here. "We are here today to hear information concerning delinquent or and/or defective filings of annual reports. The hearing was set by the board at a prior meeting. Public notice of this meeting has been provided. This matter is being recorded, and I am requesting that the county clerk please ensure that the audio recording of these proceedings are maintained as part of the record. The matters that have been set forth before us today involve Indiana Code IC 3-9-4-17. Section A requires that any person fails to file with the county election board a report in the manner required under IC 3-9-5 is subject to a civil penalty. The purpose of these proceedings is to determine if such penalty needs to be applied to the persons who have been asked to appear. Indiana Code provides that if the county election board determines that a person failed to file the report or statement of organization by the deadline prescribed under this article, the board shall assess a civil penalty." And then the penalties vary depending on which filing is late. So with that, we'll begin. Some of the names here on our list have agreed to waive their hearing and pay the fine, so we are going to deal with those first.
Your first one, excuse me. The first one you have with regard to waiver is with Bill Darnell, and it is, he's already made the payment of $50. So he's waiving his appearance and paying the fine.
Wanna do these motions separately?
Yes.
Motion to accept that waiver.
I'm sorry, which name was that? I didn't hear.
Bill Darnell.
Oh, Bill, okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The next waiver that you have is with Russell Irwin, and it is the penalty for $250.
Motion to accept that waiver. Second to accept the waiver on Russell Irwin.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next waiver you have is with Jesse Harper, and the penalty, the fine amount was $50, and I believe that's already been paid along with the waiver.
Motion to accept that waiver. Motion to accept the waiver for Jesse Harper, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next waiver you have is for Parnell for Portage, and it is for the waiver to attend the meeting as well as the payment of $50 for the fine.
Motion to accept that waiver. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next one you have is for the committee to elect Pete Trinidad Jr., and the fine amount is $200, and for his waiver of attending the meeting here today.
Motion to accept that waiver. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next waiver you have is for the committee to elect Eric for Porter. The fine amount was $50.
Motion to accept that waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, for this next section, we're gonna ask anyone who intends to speak before the board on the record, either for yourself or on behalf of someone else, please stand and raise your right hand. I'm gonna read this, and then you just simply attest by saying I do. Okay. "Do you swear to affirm under penalty of perjury that the evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?" Thank you.
Okay, if you want to take it alphabetical, you can do it alphabetical.
Mr. Acosta?
I can keep track of it that way. John Acosta?
John Acosta?
Okay, Mr. Acosta had an annual report that was due on Jan- January 17th, 2024. He did turn in his report on January 22nd, 2024, at 4:00. There is a fine amount in the amount of $300. Notice was sent to him, and, hang on a second. He received his notice on February the 13th. To be here.
So we've not heard from him in any fashion? The office hasn't heard from him?
He was three minutes late?
No.
He, he was, uh...
Three days?
Three days, four days late. You have to count the date that it's due to. So it's, actually, it's the 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th?
21st, 22nd, so he's actually...
Okay, six days.
Six days late.
He's late. I think the fine has to stand.
I'll make that motion. $300 fine stands.
Do we have a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna skip this, uh, down to Robert Forrester.
Mr. Forrester, Robert Forrester?
That's, I spoke with Mr. Forrester. He was unable to make it today due to a appointment in Indianapolis.
Would it be the board's pleasure to send out another notice for him to return next month? He, at this point, Mr. Forrester, has a $1,000 fine.
Has he filed? Whatever's missing, do we know? He did file?
Yes, he did file.
I think we should hear from him, given the size of that fine. Do we know why he couldn't make it beyond he had to be in Indianapolis? Was it, uh...
It was a doctor's appointment for his wife. He had to drive her.
I'll move that we hold over Mr. Forrester and allow him to address the board next month.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, um, what I'm doing, I'm skipping down the list to the ones where we have, where notice has been received. We'll come back to the ones where we have questions about notice, okay? Going down to Blake Jefferson. He received his notice on February the 10th, and he has an outstanding fine of $1,000.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Would you take a seat up here, please? Remind you, you're under oath.
Yeah. Um, I'd like to say, I mean, I understand I'm a grown adult. I need to learn due dates better. I will also say that I wasn't receiving emails. They had the wrong email account listed for me, so I wasn't getting dates sent to me. I was told that it's also on Facebook and Instagram. I don't follow the pages on there, so that's, again, something I can reach out and do for next time, so it doesn't happen again. As you can see, I've followed zero, file zeros every single time. I'm not, I don't campaign, I don't take money, anything like that. And then also, I, I was just noticing on the dates on here that it was due on January 17th, and then you guys had a meeting eight days later, but then I wasn't even notified until after the max $1,000 fine had been added up, and then I was noted almost over three weeks later. So I was seeing if there was anything we could do to lower that fine a little bit for our first offense.
Have you disbanded the committee?
Uh, no, I didn't disband it. I, I filed my paperwork and, um, I don't know. I did, yes, so, yes, I did.
He did file?
They told me I had to come up to the microphone now. So yes, Blake did file his paperwork as soon as he got the notice. He actually texted me too, 'cause he's my, I know them. So he texted me and asked about receiving the stuff. He said he had previously talked to somebody at the office before, which we found out about the email, so we did have his incorrect email address, so it was not going to the correct one. It was typed in wrong. But yeah, as soon as he got it, he texted and then filed his report right away, but that is something that we can go over on how to disband as well.
Thank you.
And he did disband?
No, he did not.
Okay, you plan on disbanding? You plan on...
If you disband it...
Gonna run again?
...reports anymore till you run again. He won't run again for another four years.
I did that this morning.
You disbanded this morning?
I did that this morning. Got everything, yeah. Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So, I'd like you to explain again the, the timing that you, that you shared with us about notification?
Yes, sir.
And where, where that fine was at at the time?
Yes, sir. I see here I was supposed to file by noon on January 17th, and then it says here that you guys had a meeting on the 22nd, which would have been a few days after that. And then it was $50 a day. I didn't even receive, this certified letter is dated for February 8th. She stated I received it on the 10th of February, which is over three weeks after, so I didn't even get notice until the $1,000 fine had already built up to the max.
Okay. But I, I guess my question is, if you, if you knew you were late, you would have paid it?
I would have paid it instant. I didn't know that I was late, to tell you the truth. I honestly didn't think I had to do anything until April. That was my fault.
I guess what I'm saying is, the timing of the letter doesn't really affect how much the fine was accruing, because you weren't aware of the fact that you had to pay it.
Correct. But an earlier letter would have canceled out that fine going as long as you did. Even a postcard in the mail saying, hey, remember these dates, 'cause not everyone uses the social media and all that stuff. I mean, I use it to post pictures of my kids, not look up stuff on the council and stuff like that.
You, you do understand, though, that the fine, the fine has nothing to do with being notified. The responsibility to understand your, your filing dates...
Yes, I, I...
Are held by you, not by the...
Yeah, that, that's why I said at the beginning, I, I know I'm a grown adult, I need to know all the dates myself, but also having my wrong email address, not sending me the correct dates is a big thing, well...
Some of it.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe the candidates are supposed to keep their information updated with the Elections Office, including Cindy, is that right?
Correct, but the...
But it got transcribed wrong by us?
Transcribed wrong.
It was typed in wrong. I wrote the correct address. It was typed wrong.
Okay. Got it.
All right. Any thoughts? Anybody questions, thoughts?
No, just first offense, I'm, I'm more open to, to reduce on a first offense stuff, so. And keep in mind, the rules say that whatever we do do, it has to be unanimous, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Given that we had messed up on our side as well, I'd be in favor and would motion to reduce it by half, $500.
I can live with that. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So am I good to leave?
Yeah.
Your next one is Susan Loeb.
Susan? Another big one.
Yeah, the fine amount is $1,000. It is for the annual report that was due on January the 17th.
Good afternoon. I'm Susan Loeb, and I'm here today, ask the board to consider waiving the penalty for the late filing of my final CFA-4 report. The reasons are several, I believe. I live in Beverly Shores, a small town of approximately 500 homes. In 2019, I decided to run for town council and won. I self-funded the purchase of yard signs, postcards, and stamps in the fall of 2019 as set forth in my initial CFA, CFA-4 report. I received no contributions from any individuals, corporations, labor unions, PACs, or any other organizations. I spent $901.80 of my own money, and after that, I did not receive or expend another penny, or receive another penny from any other person or entity. I continued to submit a report each year. In practice, I disbanded my political, my political committee at the end of 2019. In hindsight, beginning in 2020, what I should have done was check the box showing final disband, the, excuse me, the committee, because I had no expectation to fund any, another penny. I simply thought that I had to file it for as long as I held public office, which was a four-year term, which ended December 31st, and I didn't run again. So, in the four-year term, I continued to file the CFA-4 report for the, for the years, and every line was always zero, every schedule showed, and a not applicable. Because I, in practice, disbanded my political, political committee, but not on paper, the Porter County Clerk's Office would email me in January to remind me that I needed to file the report, and I would promptly file it and populate it with the zero revenue and the zero expenditures. When I received the notice of here, this hearing on February 10th, I immediately filed the report by email and also emailed a copy to Jessica Bailey and mentioned to her that I had not received a reminder like I had in prior years. She promptly and nicely responded that she had sent it on January 10th, and that I should check my SPAM file, which I did, and I didn't see it there. Not that it wasn't sent, but it was, I had never received notice. And in the past, I have the emails that came to my, directly to my inbox, 'cause I don't check my SPAM file very often. So now I'm facing the $1,000 penalty, which is more than I spent on my campaign in 2019, and because I failed to check the box in the final, as a final report, in 2021 and 2022, and, you know, in reviewing the reports, not that it was your responsibility, but no one ever suggested that these reports may not be necessary under what I was reporting. It's an annual report. I acknowledge that it was late, and I sincerely apologize to, to the board, to Jessica, for what it's worth now. In this, I remembered in November, December of 2023, that I needed to file my last report because my term was ending and I was not running again. Then regrettably, it slipped my mind during the holidays, including I had an eye emergency on December 28th and the weeks thereafter until February 8th, when my husband and I were on a short trip in Florida visiting friends, one of whom had just become the new council president in Beverly Shores. And it was then it hit me, we were talking something about the town, that I had forgotten to file it. I returned home a day or two later, and in the mail was the notice of hearing, and it was if I remembered it just as the Porter County Clerk's Office was dropping that notice in the tail box. I hope you agree that under these circumstances, no penalty should be assessed. I spent less than $1,000 on my yard signs and mailings. I never spent another penny. I never intended to continue my committee. I was elected to the council, and I've never considered myself an organized politician. I just wanted to take my turn to serve Beverly Shores. I simply didn't think through the ramifications of checking the box annual report versus final report. Again, I'm truly sorry, and thank you for consideration of my request.
Anybody have any questions or thoughts?
First offense, first, I would...
And you've since closed now?
Oh, yeah. I sent it on February 8th. I, I sent it the day I received the notice.
And if I, if I understand this right, you were only gonna serve one term anyway? That was your intention?
That was, oh, well, after you serve a year, you never, I'm joking. I, I really didn't know. I never, I, you know, I was, we're a small town, and, you know, people step up to the plate and take their turns, and I just never, you know, you serve on the town council, but you never really consider yourself a politician...
Yeah.
Just by the sheer nature of the size of our town.
Well, under, under first offense, last time, we said $500. So I think consistency is part of what we have to do here as well. A lot, a lot of times, in people's lives, they get caught up and stuff, and we do understand that, but at the same time, the statute says we shall. So, you know, it's what the state intends for us. So I would move for a fine reduction of, to $500. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
How do I, what is...
To the clerk?
Okay.
Or to the office?
The Elections Office?
Okay.
Do you know where the new Elections Office is?
It's...
I'll figure it out. 155 Franklin.
Okay.
Right down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one you have is Robert Parnell.
Mr. Parnell? He's a waiver.
Okay, he's, he got a waiver. Okay, he's he got a waiver last minute. Okay, sorry. Next one you have is Lance Raphael. Notice was received on February the tenth. The fine amount is one thousand. This is also one that you've had come before the board before.
Okay. Mr. Raphael, are you here? Lance Raphael?
He's not here.
For what it's worth, he currently has one thousand one hundred dollars in outstanding fines.
No problem. I'll make a motion that it's add a thousand dollars to that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll get his attention.
The next one that you have is Pamela Schroder. She received her notice on February the seventeenth. The fine amount is one thousand dollars. There is also a another outstanding fine for one thousand dollars, and there continues to be an outstanding pre-primary report.
Hi, Pamela.
Hi. Is this on? It doesn't sound like it. Okay. Should I go ahead and start?
Sure.
I'm Pamela Schroeder, and I ran for mayor of Alpo in two thousand and twenty-two on the Democratic ticket. I financed my own campaign to the tune of two dollars. I found this in the yard, and I put a poster in my yard handmade that I was running for mayor of Valparaiso. So I was stunned when I was sued for a thousand dollars by the Smaraville firm for not telling them how much I spent on my campaign. So I apologize for not following the letter of the law. I thought it was something I would take to the Supreme Court, since I was intending on serving as mayor without any other corporation or person or financing me whatsoever. I was just going to do it the old way, which I thought was a honorable way to do it. So I'm unsophisticated, naive, and apparently wrong. So you can decide what you decide.
You didn't you didn't understand there were rules about running for office in the county?
I don't have a computer, and I don't have a cell phone. I've had a TIA, and I have to teach myself every time I sit down in front of it. So I had it all printed out. I had a hard copy, and you should see how many directives there are in
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got a good enough mind that I knew that directive was in there, but I just didn't think it applied to somebody that paid out of their own pocket, cash money. To me, it seemed eccentric, to say the least. Apparently, I was wrong.
You didn't think when you received that notice that you'd been fined a thousand dollars previously, that something like this might come up again?
I didn't read the fine print and realize it is now two thousand dollars, too. I was felt threatened, you know, that I was being sued when I I felt I was an honest person.
Fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, please don't say we're suing you.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, we don't we don't do that.
I I guess, Pam, no one would understand that you had self-funded your campaign without filing the proper documentation. That's it's meant to alleviate questions and concerns either by citizens or other campaigns. It it levels the playing field. Everyone declares what they're doing, their sources of revenue to run their
I declared in the election office what I was doing to the clerk.
You declared party, right? Is that what you mean?
No, I told them that, you know, when I got that notice, I says, and they said, oh, a lot of people are in the same situation that ran for office. They didn't understand what you don't understand. So I called the the first time I got the notice about the fine, I called the office in Mariville that sent me the notice. They spent eight dollars and thirty-nine cents for each letter they sent me. But, you know, it didn't, that didn't work, you know? Because I was wrong, apparently. I don't I don't know what to tell you.
This this isn't the only delinquent filing. This is the second time for delinquent filing. The last time that this came up, she never appeared, and the board's decision was to maintain the one thousand dollar fine. There was also the the hundred-dollar fine because didn't turn in the amended timely turn in the amendments to the report. That's how we've gotten to the place where there's outstanding one thousand one hundred dollar fine. Today, she's appeared before you, I think, for the first time.
Yes.
But she hasn't appeared on the other times that we have noticed her up. So now we're at an additional one thousand dollars on top of the other ones are final decisions. The other one thousand one hundred is a final decision.
You're combining her and Lance. She only owes a thousand.
Sorry, I am.
She's only a thousand. She's not
Okay, sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I looked at the wrong line. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So it's the delinquent, not the delinquent defective, but just the delinquent.
The reason I ran for office
Excuse me, but the former thousand-dollar fine, that still stands.
The reason I ran for office is I'm a low-income person living on nine hundred and eighty-one dollars Social Security, and the job I looked it up at the library. It's an average of fifty thousand dollars for the mayors in the state of Indiana. So I'm a low-income person. I was seeking employment. And it backfired on me. I did get a considerable amount of votes, very close to the lady that was on the Democratic ticket. She told me. She said, you know, only a few votes separated us. I would advise you not to ever vote for me.
So I'm I'm confused now with what we're dealing with here. Is it one thousand dollars or two thousand?
One thousand.
For today.
Already in? One thousand pending.
Okay.
The thousand pending is for today's scenario.
And two missing reports.
And they're not filed yet?
No.
Not help?
Other thousand?
So this is the first and last time you've you've run for an office?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm better known in the county than I I'm from union township, so. But I've worked all my, since the seventies, I worked all over this town, and people do know who I am. And then I'm honest, if mistaken.
Well, I don't know how to, frankly, I don't know how to deal with the with the idea that you make it sound quite whimsical. I'm running for mayor on a whim.
No, that was not a whim. That was a lifelong ambition is to serve my community, just like that lady in Beverly Shores.
But along with that comes requirements to file the paperwork, you know, and you still haven't filed the paperwork? Is that right, Sunday? The paperwork is who's still outstanding reports? I don't know.
It certainly seems that if we're going to treat everyone fairly, they should abide by the rules.
Yeah.
And these are the rules.
The Republicans, Democrats are in agreement. That's the kind of politician I am, too.
Yeah, and this is this is first and last, which we've kind of weighed that in the other examples that have come before you, and it was five hundred dollars?
The board, the board could also stipulate that that could be contingent upon payment of all outstanding fines, as well as ensuring that
File the paper.
All the outstanding reports are also filed.
I agree with Julie. I mean, the rules are the rules. I guess that the bottom line of it is, is that too? Is that this is a repeat offender, and this board has taken pretty hardcore position on repeat offenders.
So I think anyone else that we saw today is a repeat offender.
No, no. I mean, and that's why I brought up the first-time offense stuff on some of these. So I make a motion that the fine stands?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're not open for public comment.
Concerning what?
Well, concerning Ms. Raider here, I, my sort of friend of hers
It's the hearing.
You have to come to the mic. You have to come to the microphone.
Yeah, we need to put you on the register. State your name for us, please.
Tricia Howard is my name. And I'm Ms. Raider at the Senior Center. Listening to her conversation, you know that she is not comprehending what was required of her. She told you she's had several mini strokes. Her mental condition is not such that she totally understands what is required to do this. It was something she in her mind, she thought was a good thing. She does not understand. Her income is less than a thousand dollars a month. She is living way below the poverty line now. Even a five hundred dollar fine would be devastating for her. If you are interested in justice, you will waive this fine for her.
I'm not withdrawing my motion.
Or my second?
Just to the board, so folks understand, any decision to waive or reduce has to be based on a unanimous decision.
Is there any one of you who is not interested in justice? If this were your own parent, would you say the same thing?
Yep.
Really?
Yes, I would.
If, okay, if your if your mother was not had had several strokes and did not
My mom's run for office because she knows I'm sitting up here.
Well, probably because she has you to prevent her from doing it. Ms. Raider is alone. She has no family.
I understand. I fully understand all of this.
I don't think that you do, sir.
Yes. The statute says that we shall find. We shall find.
Yeah, you shall if a person is capable of understanding what they are doing and the consequences of their actions.
It's okay. It's okay. I think we should just take it.
I I appreciate you coming up here and talking about how you
Now, this is not just views, sir. This is facts.
The facts as you present them, she did not come forward and say, look, I've been wrestling with a health issue. There was time for testimony. There would have there's no way for us to simply say, okay, you think that for her, so we'll waive it.
No, sir, these are things that I know. If you want medical documentation, we can provide that.
We've already, we've already closed this. This is an ongoing
Voted.
Thing. This didn't just happen in a week. This has been going on over time. There's two offenses.
Which she did not comprehend.
That's okay. Ignorance of the law is not, you know. Thank you very much.
Okay.
This is your final, your final word?
It's already been moved, yeah. It's already been voted before you stood up. And you're not her doctor.
No, I am not her doctor.
And so there's not much that we can do about it. We under, we can sympathize with her, but there's no doctor's report that's that says any of what you just said.
Well, we can provide that. We not
It should have been provided.
I just became aware of the situation. Had I known, I I could have helped her and get this together.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next one that you have is Lucia Verhey.
Mr. Verhey?
Yes. Hi.
This is another thousand-dollar fine with notice having been received on February twenty-four.
Floor is yours.
Well, first off, thank you for taking your time today. I'm sure there's other things you'd rather be doing. And second, I really like that Pink Floyd t-shirt. But anyway, my wife ran for Pine Township Board in this last election, lost by four votes. And we largely self-funded that, although we received a couple of donations, our entire intake was under five hundred dollars. And our entire expenditures as well for, you know, yard signs and such was under five hundred dollars. So I've I've noticed a couple of things, number one being kind of the same issue in timing of the letters and everything that a couple of the other folks brought up. I am aware that that, you know, we we missed January seventeenth. Simply unaware of that, since she had run for office a couple of years prior. That was going to be the only intended, you know, she was going to run for one term, just do something for our township like some of the other people wanted to do. Now, I've noticed a couple of things, though, as I was looking through what might we do. So again, we were delinquent. We missed a date. I have filed the form for twenty twenty-three year end, the CFA four, and I've filed the CFA four to disband. We're still waiting to hear back whether they've been accepted, and I have the stamped copies and so forth. I guess we're still waiting for Mr. Kennard to be able to review these and say, yes, they're good, and you're you're done, or you need to fix something. But they've been applied or submitted on the thirteenth of this month. So I did that as soon as I could. We received the notice on February tenth. I forget what day of the week that was, but I I made some phone calls to here and downstate to try to understand what was going on and got those forms taken care of as quickly as I could. So again, those were submitted essentially right away on the thirteenth. Now, one thing, I know, I guess the the statute says must, but the the or shall, sorry, thank you. But the Lewis Caps Law Firm that sent this out, interestingly, said that the, I'll just grab a little snippet, but the the registration board must consider a fine of fifty dollars per day, which seems to, you know, that allows leeway in whatever direction you want to go. I guess it can't exceed fifty dollars a day, but it could be anything from zero to fifty dollars a day. Now, I mentioned before the small, the under five hundred dollars, because one of the things I found, too, in the the big hundred and twenty-eight or whatever page booklet about kind of the how-to for running for office in Porter County. And there was a, there was a section there, sorry, I'll get closer to this microphone. It says that if a candidate is seeking an office for which the compensation is less than five thousand dollars per year, this candidate is not required to file any campaign finance statement or report with a county election board unless the candidate receives more than five hundred dollars in contributions or makes more than five hundred dollars in expenditures. None of those apply here. This office would have paid one thousand dollars a year. And like I said, we, I've I've got my spreadsheet here. We spent, we took in under five hundred dollars, and we spent under five hundred dollars. So honestly, I I don't know where the mistake was. You know, I didn't see that part to begin with. That that suggests to me, I never even needed to do a CFA four or anything at the very beginning of this. So given that, I mean, I I did because we we weren't told that we didn't need to, and I didn't read that entire booklet, because this was this was on, oh, I forget, oh, it's back in page twenty-one of the twenty twenty-three document. And so I guess I would ask the board to waive the entire fine based on that, because even though I filed papers, this very strongly indicates to me I really didn't need to do that to begin with. So how could we be fined on something that we didn't need to do to begin with? And so I
At an open committee. The reports are due for anyone who has an open committee.
Okay.
If you have an open committee, you owe an annual report.
Okay, I don't
So if you had never opened a committee, which you did not need to do, you would not have had to file a report, but you chose to open a committee.
We were told to open a committee when we filed for the election, though.
But you chose to open a committee.
We were
It was opened.
We were instructed We were instructed to open a committee. I mean, I.
A committee was opened and it was never closed. It was never disbanded.
Right.
Therefore, you had an open committee. Anyone who has an open committee owes an annual report. That's why you owed the annual report. And in that booklet has a calendar of when the reports are due.
So we could have defied that and then actually we'd have been okay.
You did not ever have to open a committee.
Why were we told that we had to then?
I don't know who told you you had to open a committee.
Mister.
Well, I, I don't recall the name of a person either who, at the, the window when I filed the election papers for her. Or perhaps it was Mr. Kennard and his training. I, I honestly don't remember, but.
Oh, in the training, it goes over anyone who has the expenditures or makes over $5,000 a year. It's, it says it in the training. Needs to open a committee. It goes through who needs to open a committee, who doesn't need to open a committee.
Well, I, okay.
Again, I don't know why the committee was opened, but the fact that you had an open committee is why you had to file the annual.
Okay, well, I'll just continue to counter that the committee was open because we were instructed to open a committee. I'm sorry that we followed, that we did what we were told to do, not knowing that we didn't need to do that. Perhaps that's partly my mistake, but I, I don't think that's entirely my mistake.
Okay, you asked why you had to file the annual. I was telling you why you needed to file the annual.
Okay.
You had to file the annual because the committee was open.
Okay.
It was never disbanded. It was, so.
Okay.
That's why you had to file.
I, so that, that's my case. And I thank you for your time.
Well, I don't know what to think about that one.
If I may, I'm Luque Verhe. I'm the candidate. My husband is an upstanding citizen and took a lot of time to do all the treasury, et cetera, to go to these things because I'm a nurse. I was a COVID nurse at Franciscan during the height of COVID. I'm a CVS nurse for many of the people of Porter County at CVS Minute Clinic in Chesterton and in La Porte. So La Porte County as well, but plenty of Porter County people come to La Porte. My schedule is always catch as catch can because that's how nursing goes. And my husband is a volunteer firefighter protecting town, Pine Township. We did the best that we could with what we had and he, I could not go to the training. Certainly if two of us had gone, we would have been able to compare notes. What he does remember is being instructed that he had to open this. There was no discussion whatsoever of the fact that if you made or collected less than a certain amount, it was his understanding that anyone who was running had to open a committee. I recognize that that is not the case, but that is what he was instructed to do. And we're pretty upstanding people and we do and stay in the lines. And that is where we went wrong because we would have never opened the committee and we would have never had to file anything because we knew I was only going to make $1,000. And I was begged by the Republican who didn't get on the ticket to please run as a Democrat so that we could have a bipartisan cohesive community where unlike a lot of our country, two parties can get along. Unfortunately, losing by four votes, we didn't get to make that a dream come true. So I am asking you out of the kindness of your heart to waive the fee because that is money that's coming out of my salary. My husband does not work. Pine's Township does not pay their firefighters at all. $200 for uniform and transportation, which doesn't cover it because the helmet that he bought was 400. And as a nurse, I bring home less than $30 and I don't work full-time. It's a 35-hour week. And I do have to pay taxes and put some money away for the future. So thank you.
I, I have a question. Do the PAC actually collect any money from outside sources?
I don't know if there's a distinction PAC versus anything else. We, we did, we, we didn't, okay. Yeah, we did have, I believe we had two contributions. In addition, we lent.
Ourselves.
Yeah. So it totaled $420, I think it was.
Yeah, so that sounds right.
And then the expenditures, like I said, were within that, they were actually less than that because we had about $50 left over at the end of the whole thing.
And everything's been disbanded and we pay, we didn't have any money to pay ourselves back. I think there was $50.
And so this is a first time.
Yes.
First and only. Yeah.
First and only.
It was very educational.
It was very educational.
Much fun so far.
It's a lot of work. I, I have maybe more respect than I used to have for people that run around and knock on doors and try to do this stuff. It's, it's, as they say, it ain't easy.
And it's cold when you do it in the fall. And I want to thank you guys for the work that you do because I know you have other jobs in other places. So thank you for being and doing what I had hoped to do and was unsuccessful in doing.
I have my admiration for running for office in Pine Township. It's hard. Democratic chairman, I used to have to caucus people in there all the time. It just, people will serve for a little while and just give it up. It just, it's hard in Pine Township.
It is exceedingly difficult.
I agree with Julie. First offense.
First offense has been 500, a reduction, cutting it in half to a $500 fine. I keep thinking about what you, what you've said about the training. And I, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking, if I'm doing that training, I don't know as I'm speaking to you there that day, how much you're going to spend.
Right.
How much you're going to raise, you know? Maybe you, maybe you had a plan that you were going to raise $35,000. Just swamp the opposition. No one, no one had that presentation about what the rules are and how to file your paperwork is going to be able to know what you're going.
Right.
Right? So the default position, I think, is going to be you need to open it because it's only a piece of paper at the end if you do it right.
It sounds easier at the time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds really easy.
So while I sympathize with it, we can be sympathetic to everyone that's come before you today and the fine has been reduced to 500. So I will so move $500. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next one that you have is Michael Wallace and the initial fine is $1,000.
Hello, sir.
Hello.
There was one prior where Mr. Wallace was late and we accepted a waiver previously.
Should we discuss the first one or the second one?
You're, you're here on the $1,000 fine here today.
Okay, $1,000 fine. January 1st, I was sworn in to town council as run unopposed and collected no funds throughout my campaign. Also was told that I was, it was necessary for me to open a campaign, which it, now I realize I shouldn't have. The, the, at the swearing in, the president of the council reminded everyone, hey, make sure you go home, do your CFA form before January 12th. And I did. January 1st, I went, sat down on my computer, filled out the form, copied the one form that I had previously screwed up and got fined for and changed the date to the correct date. Very simple process on a computer. Scrolled down to the end, clicked saved. I did not click submit. Complete accident on my part. Similar to what we saw tonight at the beginning of this, you click a button on a computer, you think it's going to do something and it does something completely different. And on that basis, I'd like to ask the committee to waive all fines.
Okay, this says you were late once before. So was that the same situation? You click submit or you click save and not submit?
I, I believe the, the first time was, is that I filled it out and put the wrong date and the wrong thing. It came back edited to me. I did not check to see if it was, came back to me. My email, my email was sending Porter County, everything Porter County to my spam folder. So after that first time, I found it in my spam and then paid my fine like I did, like I should, because it was a mistake. This was also a mistake, but $1,000 is pretty steep for clicking save instead of submit.
Questions or comments from anybody?
You didn't notice that you didn't get a confirmation email?
I didn't check for the confirmation email. I, I should have, but I did not.
The waiver from before, was it for not filing a report or for what, for a deficient?
Late amendment.
Late amendment.
Amendment. So he's timely filed all of his reports.
Prior to this.
Except for the amendment to a defective report.
He had a late amendment and then this one.
Any ideas? On a first offense, we've cut it in half to 500 today, but this is technically not your first offense. And while I guess I could sympathize with the keystroke, I don't know that that's what you did or not.
I'm under oath. I wouldn't lie.
Well, given that you wouldn't lie, but it is a second offense, I think, $500. We'll split it in half. I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If I could speak as a citizen.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the earlier lady that ran for Vabum Mayor. I believe that this is just piling more on someone that's mentally deficient and you guys should consider doing something different. Thank you for your time.
For that.
The next one you have is Michael Wallace.
That's who we just.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I got the wrong one.
Mr. Wanger.
Yeah, Mr. Wanger.
Hello, all.
Hi, Drew.
I do agree with the gentleman. So the Democratic Party can figure something out with Pam Strutter. If you all can hold off on fining her anymore, we will get her paperwork sorted out in the next like two weeks and we'll figure out what to, to do with the payment, the fine. So I hired a friend to do my, he was a consulting friend to do the paperwork for my campaign. He got my first report in late. That should have been a warning sign. Second report, ultimately, the responsibility is mine. I take that fully and respectfully, since I have close proximity to some of the people on the board, I ask that you do not consider a reduction. I have my $1,000 fine payment right here in my envelope here. And give that to one of you on the way out. That's all I gotta say.
You dissolved that campaign?
I did. I disbanded the campaign. Yeah, I filed, yes.
That's an odd wish you have.
It's okay. I don't like any viewing of impropriety of the.
All right, we'll move on $1,000. Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Drew.
Yep, you're welcome.
The next one you have is Lori Wilkie.
Hi, Lori.
So I am a first offender. I am usually really good at turning in everything and paying everything on time. This year I had a couple of snafus that happened. I am not receiving the emails from the office and they're not going to spam either, so I don't know what's going on there. I know it's not their responsibility, mine. I also have a reminder in my phone that goes off a couple of times in the beginning of January. I was out of the country on vacation the week it was due and the week before, so I did not see any of my reminders. So I appreciate any reduction you would be willing to approve.
I, I failed to mention her, her fine amount is 400.
I realized it when I got home from vacation and as soon as I realized it, I submitted it. So I submitted it before I was served.
And you disbanded it?
I have not, but I'm going to. I've never taken in a, a dollar and every year I say I'm going to disband it. This year, I'm going to disband it.
First offense, I make a motion we reduce it by half to $200.
I second. We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you so much.
The next one you have up is Anthony Wire.
Mr. Wire? Anthony Wire?
This one is for a fine of $1,000. And there was also a, another previous fine that had been reduced. That was reduced, but I sent notice out. Notice was left on February the 10th. I'm not, I'm not sure if we got the green card back, but we send this out by way of mail. We did not get anything back by mail.
Okay, so he had an outstanding for 100?
1,000.
1,000 that had been reduced to 100.
Oh, no, that was.
I'm reading in the.
On a prior one?
Comments, yeah.
Sunday, that would be. He has an outstanding fine of, of $100.
Okay.
From a prior.
That had been reduced from some other number.
Right.
And, and that's not been paid?
That is correct.
He didn't make any attempt to contact the office or anything like that to let, know that he couldn't make this meeting? No? Motion of fine stands.
We have a mo, motion for the 1,000, no reduction. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next one you have is the Beverly Shores Future Pact. The fine is $850. Notice of today's meeting was received on February 14th. The fine amount, yeah, I've got. Sunday, can you double check your numbers against my numbers? I've got the fine amount as 850, but it may be written on a different report as.
900.
I was told 900.
You were told, yeah, that's what my sheet shows.
Turned in on the second. Okay. So it was due on the 7th, it was due on January the 17th, which counts as day one. That's 17 days.
17 times 50, that's 850.
So it's 850. Thank you.
All right, sir. Yeah, the floor.
Thank you very much for, uh, taking the time. My name is Adam Peterson. I'm the chairman of the Beverly Shores, uh, Future Pact. Uh, we just, uh, formed in late, uh, summer, uh, to help with the town council elections there. Um, we're a small organization, myself and my treasurer, my treasurer, uh, Nancy Garrity is, uh, retired, does a lot of traveling, and so, um, it, it's, uh, kinda tough to, to, uh, get her collected at times. Um, but, um, I'm responsible for, for all of the reporting. Um, we had some family emergencies, uh, that led to filing our delay, our, our delayed filing of, uh, the report, but we are in the process now of building out our infrastructure to make sure that this never happens again. Our first report, we filed on a pre-election. Um, we, uh, filed an amendment, um, because we basically did it wrong. And, uh, but, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the board's been very helpful in, in getting us up to speed, um, in, uh, in, uh, in properly reporting. Um, all I can say is, uh, no one would want the win- the winter that, that our family has had, but, uh, um, we've, uh, put in the, the controls to be sure that, that, uh, we're not gonna be in this situation again, and, uh, we would appreciate any consideration that the, um, that the board has.
Okay, so your PAC is new last year?
Yes.
And, and funding is, uh, alive and well for the PAC?
Uh, um, we have, uh, we've collected this month even, yes.
Okay. So it would seem it's a first time offense for you since you're brand new?
Yes.
Okay, well, the rule of thumb today has been half. So, um, I will move that we reduce it to half, which would be four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Do I have a second?
Four fifty.
Four.
No, four, four, four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five. The nine hundred is, is wrong. It's an eight fifty.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So four hundred and twenty-five is the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Back to some other ones. Um, uh, Jim, James, um, Belder, uh, his, the fine amount he turned in is your report on February the second. His whole fine amount was eight hundred dollars. Um, he's here present today. I have in my notes that we had sent service, but he didn't pick up his green card from what I enter. But that, but he's here, so that's all good.
Okay. Um, yes, my, uh, my apologies on that. Uh, in a literal sense, this is a second offense. In May of last year, I'm sorry, in May of twenty twenty, I filed a defective report. So I did file the report on time. Uh, there was a fine for that. I paid that one hundred dollar fine. I did not ask that to be waived. After the campaign for township, center township concluded in November of twenty twenty-two, I did not accept any additional donations. I closed out this, um, campaign committee, and, uh, it never had more after the election than six hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. And that was money that I had loaned to myself. So, uh, I did close out the bank account, and the, the difficulty was, I did that apparently in, I'm gonna guess in April. The last statement I received was March. Do you want these, Mr. Chairman, or would they be of help to you?
You can accept those.
That's January.
Thank you.
It's January, February, and March of twenty twenty-three. So there was never anything additional done. I was, my error, when I could, when I closed out the account, I assumed that was the extent of what was necessary. But I realize I've, I've, uh, seen as things have occurred here today, so, uh, I would respectfully request that, uh, that the fine be reduced by fifty percent if that's possible.
So you closed, you closed out this account last year as soon as the election was over?
Shortly there, I closed, yes, correct. I, I didn't accept, or everything was paid, and I did not accept anything additional.
So you closed out but didn't file your final report?
That's correct, sir.
Any questions or comments from anyone?
Previous one was for a defective report, so.
Yeah.
Which is a minor fence. You filed the report on time and stuff. I just, you just didn't have your numbers correct.
That's correct, sir.
Didn't meet our standard, which is understandable.
Thank you.
All right, so a minimal first offense. I'll move that we reduce it by fifty percent. That would make it how much?
Four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Can you get your bank forms back to you? Thank you.
The next one you have is Joetta Collins. Um, the initial fine is three hundred dollars. Notice was sent out and left on February the thirteenth. Hello?
Um, I'm Joetta Collins. Uh, I will say, it's been quite interesting, uh, being on this side of the, uh, table. I serve on the, um, Public Border Works for, uh, Portage, so I'm usually on that side. Um, I received a letter to appear today for my fine, uh, last year, twenty twenty-three, uh, my first time running for, uh, city council, uh, and, uh, it was very interesting. Coming down to the reports, just kinda learning and learning as I go. I've called Ken several times, uh, to receive some assistance in completing those. And frankly, just due to time management, uh, I work, uh, full-time, uh, contract with the state of Indiana Family Social Services Administration, um, and I travel throughout the state of Indiana. Uh, also with my, uh, work that I do with, uh, the mayor of City, uh, Portage. Uh, in addition to, I am studying, uh, to receive my doctorate degree, and my oldest son tore his ACL, so, and he's in therapy. So, um, sometimes emails, they get missed, uh, but, um, I'm here today, 'cause I was required to be.
Okay. The notes say here you were late once before. Can you help us remember that?
Yes, I, I do remember that. Um, I don't know exactly the date of that. The day that I was trying to complete it was the day of the deadline that morning, and I was having some issues with resetting my password. And when I called the administrative, the office, I was instructed that the ladies that work in the office, they help reset the, uh, password, and then they send you the email. Uh, but I was not able to get that. I was told, actually, that was the day, unfortunately, that some of the office staff was out of the office, uh, taking a tour of the new election building. So I, I didn't get my password until after the deadline, and then I just completed it when I could, so, um, I mean, that's just, that happened, so what can I do? Uh, but I didn't attend that, uh, hearing. I just, I paid the fine. I don't remember how much it was.
Any questions, comments from anyone? Well, the flavor of the day has been a fifty percent reduction, so I'll move a fifty percent reduction to one hundred and fifty dollars. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna jump down to Holly.
Taylor.
Taylor, mm-hmm. We'll come back, we'll come back up to, uh, um, Travis Gerhart, but Holly Taylor.
Holly Taylor?
Holly couldn't make it. I, she sent a letter. I have a copy of it. I did send it to everyone in email.
Yeah.
If you want me to read it, read it. If you want me to pass it down, I can pass it down.
Is that the one requesting?
Did that letter, did you see it?
Is that, is that, is that requesting a continuance?
Yeah.
No, she's just, she's requesting a reduction, I believe.
I think we should have her come and talk to us, and then we'll consider a reduction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can reschedule or we reschedule.
Yeah, reschedule for next month?
We've already got one, right?
Yeah.
Want to end a form of a motion?
Yeah, we'll let her finish.
I move to table until next one.
Very good, Ken. I'll second that. You okay?
Yeah.
We have a motion to table, uh, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next one we have is Pete Trinidad Jr., um, the fine.
He's seated with.
So a waiver, okay. I misset it in my notes. Thank you. Get that in here. All right, and then?
Travis Gerhart.
Yes, okay. Travis Gerhart. Thank you for coming. I think we've had, we were trying to get it mailed to you, and I think we had to do a couple of different mailings to get to you. That's why.
Yeah, I actually never ended up getting it.
We're here.
Yeah. No, 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 it's all right. Uh, so I had actually found out about this, um, by calling the office and talking to Sunday. So I ran for Hebron Town Council ten years ago, twelve years ago. Um, won, uh, by the time, uh, I didn't even finish a whole term. I got promoted, moved to Wisconsin, uh, got divorced, moved back, uh, ran, took a run at a county council at large. That's, so that's why we had kinda left the pact open for, or not pact, rather, I'm sorry, um, the account open. Uh, once I lost that, we, pretty much every annual filing, we, we kinda, we're gonna close it, and, uh, you know, we still had a couple hundred dollars, and what are we gonna do with it? I don't know. Let's just leave it, you know, we'll run it again. We didn't add anything to it. We filed everything. This, uh, past year, um, I moved, I moved a couple of times, but I was at least able to get, um, the information. So now I've been living in Malden, uh, for some time now. I, I haven't seen any of the letters for any of it. Um, I actually had thought that this last time around, a year ago, we had disbanded it. Um, and in the confusion of me starting my own business, my, uh, ex-wife, who was my treasurer, she actually had a baby December twenty-fifth, so it was, so pretty much everybody that had eyes on it didn't. And I didn't realize it wasn't done. As soon as I found out, um, you know, just via, again, just via people saying, "Hey, you know your name's on a list out front here, right?" No idea, you know, so I, I didn't even know it was still open. So as soon as I found out, we went ahead, got it closed, filed it accordingly.
The fine amount is one thousand dollars.
First offense, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce it by fifty percent to five hundred dollars.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you so much.
And I think that might, I'm gonna look back through. Yep, the FOP Lodge, thank you. Um, on the FOP Lodge, notice was sent out. They have initial fine of two fifty. This was sent by regular mail. Um, I have not gotten any kind of confirmation that it came back by certified mail, and then on top of it, we got back something on regular mail, returned as vacant.
Cops moved.
For the council.
I can, we can try to notice that up again for March, if you'd like me to try again to get a better, so we can get better service.
So, yeah, we don't know anything about where this mail went, only that they haven't responded. Our, our initial mail.
You know how you get, you get the little?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Signed for.
No, we didn't get the green card back, okay? So they could be sent, that could be sent in at the post office, but on the regular, we sent it out two ways. We sent it out by regular mail and certified mail. So when people don't pick it up, and the regular mail doesn't come back, we know that, a lot of times what we do is, we know that they got the regular mail, 'cause there's people who appeared for, before you today, who didn't pick up their green card, but they're here because they got it in the regular mail. This one came back, returned as vacant.
By regular mail, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And do we know where that address is? Is that like a storefront office, or?
That was the address they listed on their, on their committee. They filed everything, paperwork and voter registration?
That's the address that we've got.
Well, maybe mail it to them one more time through the regular snail mail?
Yeah.
And if it comes back from the postal service twice, as, you know.
That's, that's a city, city organization, police organization and stuff like this, correct? It's not the county, is it? It's county, city?
I just got FOP Lodge one forty-five PAC.
Well, I mean, in other words, it should be pretty easy to narrow it down to where you're gonna send this and stuff like this.
We, we can work on that.
Yeah, so all right. Uh, thirty-day, uh, postponement?
Or just to come back in March?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have a motion to move the FOP Lodge one forty-five thirty days till March. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I think that takes care of everything.
We're done already?
Nope.
Double checking through. Did we, we did a waiver, yeah, we got, we got a waiver on Eric Wagner, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, 'cause it's not, we just put it as elect Eric for, for Porter, but, okay. And?
Were all those the waivers?
Mm-hmm. Those are the waivers, mm-hmm.
That's a waiver.
I've got him, I've got my list Sunday that we did everything on our list today.
Okay. Amending a vote center plan for twenty twenty-four elections.
Yes, we, um, are looking to, or we're proposing to move the Town of Porter Fire Department to Hawthorne Park Community Center, and then we have some early vote, um, center changes, adding the NERPC building in Portage, and then for, um, just a standard everyday location. And then the mobile vote changes go to, um, the Loop Gas Station, Couts Public Library, Jamestown Apartments, and South Haven Public Library again. So just going back basically to what, twenty twenty, what, but instead of doing the, um, Union Hall. But instead of doing the Union Hall, adding the NERC building.
That's the second early vote site for Portage?
Yeah.
In what?
A little out of the way, but.
E-building. Okay.
Yeah, it's a little out of the way, but we can't find anything better and we don't have a budget to pay for a storefront. So.
At least clearly visible.
Yeah.
So we figure we get a couple extra signs made for directional arrows to put them out to where, to find the NERC building.
Yeah, you're gonna have to put them out there and it's, the only thing that really is, worries me about that location is that, all right, I worked in that vicinity at Amerplex. And I still go back to the Union Hall periodically to see those guys and other things that I do. At the end of the day, that mill truck traffic and the Port of Indiana truck traffic is horrendous. It's, be careful.
Well, it's what we're hoping to catch those guys then on the way to work or on the way home and people going to Bass Pro over there. That's what we were talking about, like it was, like I, not from that area, so I didn't realize it was like you go this way and then. So we're definitely gonna have to put extra flags out for the vote here flags, but they said that they're also gonna be connecting the road to 12 by, right by the NERC building, so then you'll have, catch the 80, 94 people, the people on 20, and then we'll have 12, which is like Pines, Ogden Dunes.
All that.
All the, yeah. Michigan shores, so.
I hope you're right.
It's worth a shot, like we're just, we're kinda running out of options for, like we already got the central, the Willow Creek, the Porter's North County building. So we're trying to get something more northern, I guess, to help, help alleviate some in Chesterton, cause you, you know, you know with Betty, like how busy Chesterton's getting, we added an extra board there. Kinda alleviate that. I'd love to find something like, we were trying to find something more like Burns Harbor Central, but there's nothing there.
They build it, we'll go there.
Yeah.
I mean, Paul and I went out there and looked and everything.
Yeah, we went driving around.
Yeah.
And listen.
He wouldn't buy me lunch.
And I know you say your budget, so I just, but the county pays for this election and stuff like this.
Yeah, we just have to get it added into the budget. So now is the time for us to start.
No, I understand.
Adding it into the budget.
I'd find somewhere and I'd tell them, pay it. I really would.
Yeah.
Can the public make a comment at this point, or do I have to wait?
Probably wait until public.
She wants to wait, we'll wait.
But. Are, are you gonna have like a couple late nights during the week?
It'll be the same, yeah, the same.
11 to 7, yeah. Tuesdays and Thursdays will be 11 to 7, and then the vote mobile will be out from 4 to 7 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Added hours for the vote mobile on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
And how many Saturdays?
Two Saturdays.
Two Saturdays?
And that's typical, right? That's what we did in the last presidency.
Yeah, and in '23, we had switched it to the Tuesdays and Thursdays for the bus instead of just Wednesdays. So we're just continuing for this year, doing Tuesdays and Thursdays instead of just on Wednesdays.
Right.
And you're gonna.
We love more work.
You're gonna close down at a certain time and then reopen, right? On Tuesdays and Thursdays? You're not running them straight through.
Are you moving the clock?
It's 11 to 7 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Like they start.
Starting late.
Yeah.
Starting, they start late.
They had an adjustment.
Mhm.
Yeah, instead of doing the 12 hours, starting late.
Yeah, we didn't wanna do that to them.
Okay, yeah, no, I.
It was, it was a rough day for them.
I understand. No, no, I agree with that. No, it's a long day, long day.
Okay, so do you need something from us today?
You gotta vote on that.
Yeah, it would have to be a unanimous vote for it too.
So we're gonna go back, how many days of early voting?
28.
Two Saturdays?
Yeah.
How many days was that?
It'd be the full opening.
28 days of early voting.
I believe it's 28. Let me count it again.
Count it on. So 28 is right?
I counted again, but yeah.
Which locations are open on Sundays?
Nothing on Sundays.
Nothing on Sunday.
Nothing on Sunday.
Why are we, we're not opening on Sunday?
I'm just wondering what the 28, it's 28 Monday, right?
Two Saturdays.
Two Saturdays. So the 28 days is 28 consecutive days prior to the election? But it's not on Sundays, so there are not 28 days.
Wait.
Or if I'm unjustified.
It's 21 days, but there's 28 days to take out the Sundays.
Okay. And that, and that's how we always do it?
Yes, that's how it's always done.
Okay. All right, I'll motion acceptance of the amended vote center plan for the 2024 elections. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, upcoming meetings.
Oh, that's me, sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, just need to sign. And then behind it is all the list of locations and the hours for the open one. We have a board meeting on March 28th, and then mark your calendars for April 5th. That's our public test. And our public test will look a little bit different this year. We have multiple locations because we have to go test the 850, which is out at the Expo Center. And then we'll have testing, depending on which machines call, which we should be getting our list soon. Some may be at the administration building and some may be at the election office.
We just follow around to each?
Yeah, we just have to go test all the equipment. Yes.
Okay, so that's 8:00 AM, where?
To be determined.
Okay.
Yeah, the starting point.
We haven't decided where we're starting yet. It's gonna depend on where they, but it's not till April 5th, so we have a meeting in between there on March 28th. So we'll announce the location then.
But starting at 8 o'clock and then we'll.
Daniel, Tim? Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanna set my.
Yes, and it's just the public test, it's not our, it's not our meeting.
So with travel and everything, probably went about an hour or two.
Yeah.
Any other dates?
Nope, just those two.
Okay, other business before this board? Hearing non-public comment, Barb?
Hello. So my name is Barbara Domer. I'm a resident of Valparaiso, a member of the League of Women Voters of Porter County. And I'm a council member on Valparaiso City Council representing District 3. I'm here today to talk about Indiana's dismal state ranking in terms of voter turnout. Indiana is now in 50th place in this nation for voter turnout as of 2022. We must do better than this, and I'm confident that we can do our part in Porter County to increase voter turnout. But what I heard just now with the voting plan is that there's not been any effort to increase access to voting. I'm hearing that it's a duplication of the 2022 in terms of number of days, number of locations. It's just shifting of location. So that gets me very concerned because honestly, we can't get lower than 50th place in the country in terms of states in voter turnout. We can get lower, lower in terms of the percentage, but we are at the bottom of the rankings in this country. And I know we can do better than that. I, I wanna ask the county, I wanna ask this board, what are we doing with the aim of increasing voter turnout in Porter County? I'd like to pose that question. I'm not sure if it would be posed to Jessica. I did send Jessica a list of several suggestions of how I felt we could take some efforts to increase voter turnout. And, but before I talk about the two that I'm most interested in, I just wanna hear, has there been any effort to increase access to voting so that our turnout in Porter County can be better than it was in 2022?
Every year, we increase something. And while your statistics may be correct, they are not correct for the full state of Indiana. We're actually 27th percentages of counties. While that's not where we want to be, and there's room for improvement, we are definitely not last. And in terms of counties of over 100 plus registered voters, Porter County's actually second in terms of turnout. So I'd say we're doing pretty good and we're actually improving every year. So abysmal is not used to describe voter turnout for Porter County.
I did use the word dismal, not abysmal, but nonetheless, it's not a flattering term, well.
So again, there's constant room for improvement.
Mhm.
And we are, we take the vote mobile out, that we're one of two counties that have one. And we do much better than what other counties do in this county or in this state. We have, what, six locations for early voting, which is much more than the average in this state. We have 61 vote centers, which is above the average in the state. So I do think we're going above and beyond making sure that there is location and just. Totally lost my train of thought there.
Well, I mean, I just wanna make it clear that this is not a criticism of the way the clerk's office is conducting the elections. I'm just saying, we must do better than what.
To do better, and every year we do better, but what I think needs to be understood is that while suggestions can be given, they need to be implemented within reason. And you can't go from zero to 100 in a year. We have a staff in that office of six full-time people. There are seven hours in a day. In addition to voter outreach, there's priorities and ballots that need to be done. There's voterless maintenance that's done. There's an extreme amount of work that gets done. And by six people, that's a lot.
Well, you know, I mean, I don't even wanna start talking about the legislation in the, that's getting passed from the State House now with regard to HB 1264, cause that's gonna add a lot more work to your department. But I guess what I'm talking about here is, you know, and I'm not saying that every suggestion that I sent you, I want to be implemented. But I guess one thing that I feel very strongly about is that mobile voting van that we all are very proud of. The fact that we do have that in Porter County, I think should be out in the community every day during the early voting period. And I feel that the mobile voting van should be sent to each high school during the early voting period for a period of time. Now, I know that, you know, you told me that there are safety concerns about having voting at the high schools. That's why some of the high schools have e-learning days on Election Day, but this is the mobile voting van. The public is not walking into the building in order to vote. If the mobile voting van is in the parking lot of the high school, then the public has no reason and no need and does not go into the high schools. And so I am asking for consideration to be given to increase the number of days the mobile voting van is out in the community. And in addition to that, to consider placing that mobile voting van in locations where we can maybe get some of the youth out to vote. If it's in the parking lot of the high schools in the afternoon, then maybe when school, school is let out, some of the students will go to the mobile voting van. Because having an e-learning day on Election Day does not contribute to high school students being motivated to go to the polls on, on Election Day. And all I'm saying is that I'm trying, as an individual citizen, trying to think about ways that we can improve our voter turnout. And I appreciate the fact that we're better in Porter County than the rest of the state. But nonetheless, we have the ranking in the state of being 50th out of 50 states in terms of voter turnout. And I know we can do better than that. And so that is.
Where did you get that statistic from?
The Indiana Civic Health Index.
The school boards and the county.
Indiana as a state?
As a state, we're in 50th place ranking in the nation in terms of voters.
For every single.
Look at Ballotpedia, we're 17th. I don't know what they're using, or are you coming in here?
What?
Uh, the Indiana Civic Health Index.
Cause it's still their property, just like if you wanted to.
Civic Health Index. And in the Post Tribune, I think it was about a couple of weeks ago, they published an article saying that Indiana had dropped to 49th place in the 2020 election, and now in 2022, it's 50th place. So I'll, you know, what I'm asking is for consideration to be given to increase access to voting in Porter County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got something.
Go ahead.
Listen, now, and everybody's gone now, so at the end of the day is, if anyone thinks that I derive pleasure on sticking it to little old ladies or people that come in here, that, everything with their delinquent reports and everything like that and stuff, man, that's not the case. Let me tell you something. I sat out there for many years, and prior to this clerk getting this stuff straightened out, these reports were nonexistent, nonexistent. If you ran against somebody and you wanted to see how much money they had in their pack going into the last 30 days to see if you needed to raise some more money to do something and stuff, you couldn't even figure that out and find that out and stuff. And it was frustrating. It was frustrating. People deserve to know how you're raising money and how you're spending money and stuff. Some people honestly base their decision on who they're gonna vote for, looking at those reports and stuff. So, and with regards to my mother, my mother taught me to play by the rules. These are the damn rules. So, like I said, I agonize over a person like Mrs. Schroeder or other people that have come up here and stuff. But here's what the situation is. If I waive one, I got the next person to come in with a story and stuff like this, and I'll be waiving 50% of them and stuff. And then we're back to square one. We're back to square one. So, I mean, I take your comment and I understand. I understand what you're saying. But the rules are the rules. When you run for office, you get a book and take the opportunity to take classes. We got it where you file this stuff online and everything. We've made it so much easier and simpler to file these reports and get them turned in in a timely fashion. So, you know, and we've heard every excuse that you can think of sitting up here. But like I said, when we start bending the rules or get all over the board with, we like this person or this person, or I feel sorry for this person, and maybe I don't feel sorry for this person and stuff like this, man, then we're back to anarchy and we'll get nobody filing reports correctly. And if you're a person that's running for office that wanna see your opponent's report, then you'll be in here yelling at me about, why can't we get these reports turned in on time?
The law says.
Right. So, like I said, and my mom wouldn't run for public office, smarter than that. That's all I got to say.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. No, she's legitimate, like this.
Yeah.
But here's my, here's my situation. Got the one report and got a notice about it. Would've come in here after the first one and explained what's going on.
Yeah, I wish, you know. Yeah, and I understand.
I do, you know, I think, and this is, this is you, I don't, I don't, never even been to one of these before, but I believe that you're still part of judge jury. You know, so I believe that the laying it down as an iron rod, you cross this line and don't cross that line, the penalty's the same? I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think there can be some judge and jury from the committee.
Well, that's why we waive the ones with the first offenses, but if you're in a. Well, that's why we waived the ones with the first offenses, but if you're in a second offense, we basically have said as a board.
Yeah.
There we go.
You knew the first time.
Yeah.
And half the time, the first time, we did waive the.
Yeah, this is.
When we first started implementing these changes, we were waiving everybody thinking, the word's gonna get out, that they gotta go pick the work, it's legit stuff. So we've been after. This is the worst list in four years since I've been serving.
Yeah.
It's tough. It's the hardest day we have.
I understand.
Emotion.
And those communities.
Yep, that would be great.
Oh, okay. That's a good group of people.
Yeah.
Uh, we're trying.
Part for years, I mean, I've, I've, chairman, I used to have some pockets.
Uh, do we have an address of that FOP Lodge?
I was asked to order.
Yeah.
I volunteered for.
Voting.
Yeah.
From the fire station to Hawthorne Park.
You looking? You're probably fast.
Mary, yep.
Thank you.
Correct. Yep.